First order of business is agenda additions or deletions.
The sidewalk. Or the generator.
The generator.
Okay, I'll just put up to side.
Figure it out as we go, I guess.
Sounds good.
Minutes. Select board minutes from January 17.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
I did update the approved date at the very end. It said September, or January 17. I changed it to February 6.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Paper orders for February 7.
Make a motion.
Seconded it.
Questions, concerns? Another question I had, did you know what the chains were that were $900?
The chains $900?
I bet that's a chain for the sander.
Okay.
As far as I know, they haven't bought any more tire chains.
I say, we better not be buying tire chains if.
No, we're not. Then they had, I think they bought one or two more chains.
Is that the dryer, the dryer air assembly one?
No, that's the one, that's the air dryer that blew off, rotted off, actually. Good old mother nature.
Okay, so $26,974.07 on the favor of approving them. Paper?
Aye.
Aye.
opposed. Honorable mentions, we want to thank Jordan Jankis for hosting a free matinee and Thursday evening film series. He's been doing that for a few weeks now. We're on to road commissioner.
They've had a couple of breakdowns, that chain, I presume that is the one for the 14, which is Lori's truck. They replaced that, ordered that, replace that. Since then, two weeks ago, at that start of that storm, their little sander in the one ton crapped out. They broke the chain, wanted it all up. So he came up and got my sander out of my yard. And he's been running that up until today. He finally got his rebuilt and is putting that back in and setting mine. I told mine, he could leave it down there at this sand shed. I asked him why the other one wasn't running that we bought two years ago. And he said, we've been robbing parts off it to keep this one running. I said, well, that's not the object of that. So as far as I know, he was supposed to put that one in. I brought him down some steel sawhorses so they could set it on it and they could work on it safely. And they were going to start rebuilding, fixing that one, putting the chain in it, getting that one ready to go. The air dryer that Sandy's just talking about on Charlie's truck, literally saltated off, the casting just dissolved. That was like $1,000, I think. Plus, I don't know, one of the parts he had to hook it up and they put it, put it on themselves. Other than that, of course, they haven't, they've been hauling a little bit of stone to mix in with the sand. Other than that, they haven't really been doing anything in the line of road work. And I told him, I said, you know, if the weather keeps up, I said, we probably ought to go cut some brush.
Yep.
Get started on that, I said, whether or not, the weather provides or not, right now, it's not too bad, so. But he was going to move the sander in and they were going to work on that, I think, today and stuff. Far as I know, there's nothing else, there was no other issues down there. I guess there's a meeting on the bridge tomorrow, Sandy? That Denary?
Yep, tomorrow afternoon.
Yeah, what, I didn't happen to open.
1:30?
1:30.
Yeah, here.
1:30 here?
Yeah.
Oh, it's not at the bridge?
No, it's with Rutland Regional.
Oh, okay, well, that's good, I'd have been waiting down at the bridge.
It's not tomorrow afternoon.
Yeah, Tuesday, I thought, that's what the meeting was.
Yeah, tomorrow.
Well, I thought it was a week from tomorrow.
No, tomorrow's, the sidewalk committee is a week from tomorrow. Tomorrow's the bridge. Monday's Fitzgerald and then Tuesday's the sidewalk.
Is this the local concerns meeting for the bridge? What meeting on the bridge is this?
I think it's on the engineer, isn't it?
Creek Road Bridge.
Creek Road Bridge, sire.
Yeah, we're just gonna, we're meeting with Devin from Rutland Regional, see what we can do about getting it pushed higher on our priority list.
I was thinking about the rock bridge.
Yeah, not, not that one yet.
The other couple of issues I have is back to the brush hog for the track excavator. I think we set money aside for that, pulling it out of the mowing for the summer. I was way, I think it was worded. We didn't hire a mower so we can, we have $8,000 set aside for mowing and I think the mower's around $6,000. So that's something I think the board ought to make a decision on so we could either order it.
Question on that field, do we really need something that can take down six inch diameter trees?
No, two to four.
The one that she showed us was.
He told me two to four, it won't take six, I know it won't, machine's way too small.
Is the one that, online, the one that does two to three inches is considerably cheaper than.
But does it have the mulching head on it?
Well, even with the mulching head, it was only another.
It's around, I think the machine is five grand, I thought, and the mulching head plate is like a grand. $900 and change. That's something we can look, make sure we get, we're talking the same thing, even if we order it.
Right.
You know, I think it was just under six grand, the one where I was looking at.
One that you gave us a link to, I went online and looked at, it says it'll do a six inch diameter tree.
Oh, no, I didn't, I thought. What's it say? Yeah, $59.90.
$59.89.
$89. That's a 36 inch and it's, is there a spec on that?
For excavators, nine to 14,000 pounds.
Yeah, see ours is 17, so it would be no problem there.
13 to 23 GPM.
Yeah, well, I looked into, I called Kat and looked into the piping for the return line. And I don't think it's right, but he quoted me a price for that machine for $157 to put a return line on it, which I didn't think Kat did anything for under $500.
Who's the dealer for those?
Rut Manufacturing.
Can they actually send us like a real estimate with.
Oh, yeah, he said he would.
Warranty and all that.
Yep, he would send all that when we were ready to commit. And like I said, we have to figure out, make sure we're talking the same machine. But he told me two to four inch and when I talked to the owner on it.
The two to four inch that I saw online was only like $3,900 or something. And then it was another $400 or $500 for the mulching attachment and.
Well, there's, there's two different versions of it because of being one with a drain might be the difference in your thinking. Because I'm pretty sure he's holding me two to four inch, I got the paperwork at home, I did not bring it. But that's something, like I said, we can look it over.
Now, the one that was, the one that was $5,600 online was, said it would do a six inch tree. And I said, that seems way more than what we need.
Yeah, well, yeah, they don't need, no, six inch trees, they need to be cutting down. This is made for small brush vines, you know, roadside overhang and stuff like that. It's not made, you know, this machine won't mulch trees. It's not, just not made to do that. But he said it was a four to six weeks minimum on the delivery time, so. You know, if it was something we could get decided to do and then get it coming, we could have them do some this winter before, you know, do it during mud season too in the roads, that wouldn't hurt the roads any. Before the leaves come out, get that part done.
I think I'd like to see an estimate with a product description of what, what it can do.
Yep.
And maybe if we get the two different types, we can then compare.
Yeah, because you can go right online and look at it. I just, I don't have the number with me, which machine. I know there was a difference because we had to step up because of the high flow of the machine oil and putting a castrant in it. Because the seven to 14,000 pound machines have much smaller pumps. And then the bigger machine like ours has a higher flow pump, so you have to step up in machine size. Or brush hog size, mulcher, whatever you want to call it. So that's something I can get the paperwork on. And then we can make a decision on it. And the other one was a leaf blower, I think Sandy said there's a deadline on that.
We have to take delivery by June 30.
Yeah. And that's a four to six week minimum. So that's something we need to look into fairly quickly. On that, that way we can get that coming.
What are you putting that on?
That's going to go on the cat loader. It's going to be a quick amount, we're going to have a quick attach, we've got the plates to make a quick.
Oh, I was going to say, because I'm reading it, it says it's a skid steer attachment.
Yes.
And that, that won't fit in front of the.
No, we're going to make a skid steer plate attachment.
Okay.
So, we've already got the plates for it, we just haven't made it.
Okay. I'm just looking at that.
On the loader or the excavator?
Loader.
Okay.
Front end loader. That ours already plumbed with the hydraulics and everything, all set to go.
Oh, I said, that was my one, I'm looking at, it says skid steer, skid steer attachment, I'm like.
Yeah, it's just going to set it up a skid steer plate so any other attachments that we get, we can multiple use on the same plate.
That's just got the round bars in there, or the round, the hooks on the top.
Yeah, yeah, standard cap.
They have both the estimates.
And there's.
For all three.
Yeah, there's three different estimates. The difference between high flow, or high volume and standard, is the way this gentleman put it to me was, he said, if you were working an eight hour day with a high flow, it would take you eight hours and 15 minutes to do it with a standard flow. It's a little bit slower, same machine. And it's what, almost $2,000, $2,100 difference?
Yeah, one is $73.94, the other one's $88.15, and the third is $92.95.
So it's, I don't see where this high flow is that much more necessary for the $2,000 and a standard. But that's an option that the town can make.
Do we have the quotes to? You want to make a motion and go ahead and move forward on this, or do people want to still think about?
We have a grant for what part of it, five?
No, 56.
56.
So what do you think, of the smaller one, this?
The standard, yes. You know, and we have 56 of it in a grant that we're going to lose if we don't do it.
Right, that's only a couple thousand dollars, so. That's the Finch Turf Incorporated?
Yes.
Yes, the Finch Turf one?
Yeah.
It should, it was a $73, yeah.
$73.94.
$73.94. That's going to be big enough to do what you need to do?
Yeah, that's standard, that's the same as all the rest of them around here. Except for the rest of them, I'll decide to go with high flow.
Okay.
So we talked them into high flow.
I make a motion that we accept the Finch Turf Incorporated equipment sales order.
I'll second that.
Those in favor?
You got taxes on that, right? No, no taxes on it.
It just comes with a 45 degree elbow on the blower head.
Got that invoice, that's the only thing I'm sure of.
Bill Lawson? What happened there?
He didn't give me any other details, he, he dropped off the invoice with July and she said it was a tree damage on 140 watts.
So a tree, did the tree fall on him or did he hit it?
I asked him that and I didn't get any, I didn't get a response. I don't know if it was, it fell, if it's hanging, if it was sticking out, I don't know.
It was in that storm.
So my, my understanding is anything from the storm or hanging or debris in the roads, an active nature counts not liable. That's been my understanding along, right along.
My time on the board, we have never approved anything like this.
No.
And I think probably when Bill was on the board, they didn't approve things like this either.
Because we've had this, I think we've had this question come, when I was on the board the last time, we had this, not, not this, but the same idea come through and, you know, from a tree, and it's like, yes. I have one question, both of you issues here while we're on there. The edge of the road coming south on 7th. Who's responsible to take that snow and push it back or remove it?
On 7?
On 7, on North Main Street. I'm thinking by the Catholic church where that snowbanks are out, you know.
State.
Yep.
Okay. Is there any way that we could send a request to the state and ask them that they would kindly push that back or remove it?
I'd try, but in the past, when I've asked them that and I've asked them that a number of times, they said they could just stop clearing it all together on the side of the road and just.
No, I'm not talking by the light, because that's where they said that the last time. But, you know, I'm thinking up by the Catholic church where everybody parks out in the road now.
I know, we did it down, I asked the same thing down here in front of the library and some of these businesses and the daycare. They didn't like it very much.
How much work would that be for the road crew to take that loader and run down through that, just right up to the curb, edge of the curb? If, if we had permission from the state.
Well, you just have to have somebody flagging, that'd be my only thing, with the people in the roads today. You can't just.
Right.
It used to be you go out there, watch yourself.
Yeah, no, I know.
Keep going. Are you talking northbound or southbound?
Southbound.
Southbound.
On the opposite side of the Catholic church.
Yeah.
It's just wicked, I mean, there's no place to park, I mean, it's narrow anyways on that side. But it's no, a little bit, now it's not bad, but get any kind of snow over there.
Yeah.
Because the state and the guy that does the sidewalks are fighting each other. One pushes into the sidewalk, he pushes in the back of the road and they continue to fight. It just went through Sunday and then would, you know, they were parked in the road, well, half the cars were in the road, I'd like.
I don't think, it'd probably be less than half a day, but it'd be up to the board to make the decision whether they want to take over. Because if you do it there, is it going to be a domino effect in front of the.
Well, that would be very.
Restaurant, you know, in front of the rest of the businesses? That's the only question I.
I mean, how much, how much, just curious, how much time would it take to, if you wet that whole stretch all the way down through and clean up by the light?
Where are you going to put the snow?
I don't know, down to Redfield?
I don't think that would work, there's going to be garbage in it. We used to dump it on the edge of the creek and they complained about that. I know one year we dumped it over where the leaves go. But, you know, you, you could spend, you know, if there was any amount of snow, you'd spend a day doing that strip from Cumberland Farms to.
Oh, I know, I know.
Bowl. You know, with two trucks and a loader. But it's, like I said, then you got to have flaggers, got to have a place to dump the snow.
Right. Well, like I said, I'm just, you know, like I said, that road's getting, when they push the snowbanks right after a storm, it gets a little narrow through there.
That's terrible.
With people parking, so.
Just think, we had any real snow.
I know.
Wouldn't be able to drive down there. I don't know what, I, my suggestion would be go to the state first if we have accumulating snow. And then we'll have to take it up from there, I guess. I know.
I mean, they're going to allow us to put crosswalks in, so maybe they might clean it up a little bit, I don't know.
Because like I said, if you do it for one, you're going to end up doing it for all. That's the only other.
Well, I know they don't want to do the, the light, so.
Yeah.
They made that perfectly clear. But yeah, I don't know where you'd dump that.
We used to just dump it over the edge of the creek years ago, when we cleaned all the parking lots. And we stopped that.
Yeah.
I guess the one other thing we have under that is AOT project manager Lori Stone sending an email regarding Bridge 15 with 55, and she wants to be on our agenda. Sandy was questioning, when do we want to do it, like the second meeting in March?
Yeah, I think if we wanted to get all the property owners, maybe the next meeting. The February is too quick, and then we don't want to do it right before town meeting because that's a short meeting. Maybe second meeting in March.
Public comments. And we're on to the Red Committee. So we have three quotes for basketball backboards. Guess we can start with that.
Where's the third quote? Is it this picture? This is.
This one? Yep.
Thank you.
I found it interesting that the folks from Texas could ship it up here for free while the people in Pennsylvania want $236 to ship it up.
Is this for one backboard rim?
No, it's for two.
It's for two? Oh, yes, I see.
And this was the funding that was donated to the community.
And that's $5,000? How much was donated?
I thought it was.
Julie said we have $4,000.
$4,000.
$4,000.
So we might need some money for installation and then we're also thinking about putting some pads around the base of the poles. Because right now, if you're close playing like under the hoop, you could easily bump into the.
Right.
Hoop. Because they're not the kind that like overhang, they're not like the better kind. It would be safer. We have what we have, so we'd like to, if we have money left over, improve those.
On the third quote, which size matches the two other quotes?
The quotes are all the same equipment. So if you look at the numbers.
It just has that 1,200, 900?
It's the F20, 220, the 900.
The 220, okay.
That's where I was finding. I was surprised, it's the same exact piece of equipment that they all quoted, which. So Sumio got all the quotes too, so I was hoping he would be here and answer. I mean, I know sort of genderly what's going on, but he was the one who got the quote, so.
So is that 933, is that everything included in that price?
For what?
That's just the backboard?
That's just back.
Is that one backboard or two?
Because we're not getting new poles, we're just getting a backboard and the hoop.
It's just, um.
That's one backboard.
Two of the quotes for.
That's one?
Close to $2,800, one quote for 933.
That's for one backboard.
That's for one, it's not for two, okay. But still, if you times that by two, would we still have to get rims with that one?
I don't, I don't have in front of me what you have in front of you, I don't know how it's formatted, if you want me to.
The quote is for two, two rims and two backboards.
Okay. Sorry, now I'm.
The one you're looking at, you can't really go by because all that is, is the factory and they're giving a price and then telling you, you need to go to a dealer.
Yeah, they wouldn't actually sell it to us.
Yeah, they don't sell them.
Okay, thank you.
So basically it comes down to.
Like free shipping is what it comes down to.
Yeah.
Okay. Oh, we see, yeah. I think we go with.
So we did recommend the lowest bid.
Yeah. I think we go with that, the lowest one.
Are those the most both of them?
Yeah, they're the same exact piece of equipment. Same brand, same everything, yeah. I forgot what to do with the old ones, I was thinking maybe we could put one of them down at the beach. That one's pretty dilapidated down there, so maybe we could reuse one of them down there and then.
Great.
I don't know, if anybody has any ideas what to do with the other one. I mean, they're good, you know, they're, they're not in terrible shape, so.
Well, I think we can.
We can use them somewhere.
Yeah, we save that second one for probable use at some location.
Yeah.
Great.
So entertain a motion to.
I make a motion to accept the quote from American Supersports for the purchase of two new backboards and rims for the basketball court down at the Redfield.
Do I have a second? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. You want to speak to this survey?
Oh, sure, so I sent it along with the steam.
They have problems.
Yeah, okay, good. Yeah, so I made significant revisions to it based on the feedback from the board the last time we reviewed it. I wasn't at that meeting, Sumio was there, but I, you know, read the minutes and talked to Sumio and I think I addressed most of the concerns. I did put in some more specifics so that people could instead of just saying yes or no, say like, you know, how much they want something or how often they use it, instead of just like black or white, have like a gradient of, you know, interest. And, you know, we went through and we added a number of things to, you know, there were suggestions from Sandy and others to, you know, try to gauge a broad interest in the community as far as like Asian interest and demographic. So we were hoping to put this out digitally, ready to get like a really good response. And then have paper copies at town hall for people that don't have like a computer, but you don't have some way for people to enter like their email address or their street address so that like people can't like, you know, I mean, not that I'm worried about people like filling it out more than once, but, you know, some way to identify like who, how many people filled it out from each residence. So, yeah. We're really interested in prioritizing things that the community wants, so that's why we want to find out. I think it looks good. Maybe it would be good just to get some. Maybe it would be good just to get some idea of what the community's looking for.
I think getting town input is the way to do it.
Yeah, I mean, you know, we wanna know what people want, 'cause then we'll, there's a million things you could do, and we don't have so much time and money, so.
Exactly.
We're not focused on what people want. But-
And no survey's gonna ever be perfect on the life that's going on, but at least it'll give you some-
Yeah.
Some direction.
Yeah, that's what we're looking for, direction.
We do have one concern, the online reservation system is, is not feasible. Our, our sys, our, what do I wanna say? Our internet, our online, is not capable of doing that. And frankly, I would be opposed to an online reservation for the park anyway, to use the playground or the tennis courts.
Well, I think there's a lot of people who are interested in it, and I, I mean, would you keep an open mind and consider people's interest in that, because a lot of other communities do it. And the reason they do it is like, for example, if you wanted to have, like, somebody came to our last meeting and said, "I'd like to have a women's basketball court." And we were like, "Wow, that's great, you know, how can we help you, that sounds like a great idea." But like, they were like, "Well, we wanna make sure that the court's gonna be available," you know, so like something like that, like where people can actually like make sure that like the court is gonna be available for like their specific use, and it doesn't necessarily need to be like hosted on the town server, it could be outsourced to, I don't know how other towns do it, this was Brian's idea, but-
And I don't know how it was run, but I know, um, at least the last couple summers, Anthony can't just put together a little like basketball group that would get together, and they had teams, and they would play each other, and they would do things. Did, did Anthony ever, did he just go down there and take the court, or did he, okay?
Yeah.
So what if like, you know, this woman wants to have like a women's basketball group, and she shows up and there's like ten kids playing on the court, I mean, I don't know. It would just be nice for people to be able to reserve-
Especially with-
Prevent reasons.
Those groups, they, they would be probably amenable to saying, "Okay, the kids are using the court these days, we'll use the court that day."
Yeah, and I don't even know if people would be interested in it, but, you know. I don't see certain things being interviewed.
Certain things.
And that's where if you put a survey, you could at least see if the town would be interested in it, and see if it'd be worth looking into. It's not saying we'd do it.
I, I just think it should be first, come first served.
I think, but we, we have so many groups that are trying to use those fields, and so-
I, well, maybe the ball fields-
The, the ball fields isn't something that would be-
But, I mean, the tennis courts and, and the basketball courts are certainly not overused.
No, but this might be a way to at least help organize those different groups that want to come here and use them. It's, it's just on a survey, it's not saying we can do or will do it, but at least it's giving a jumping out point to see if it's something that should be investigated. Maybe three people will say yes, and then it's no point in wasting time.
Or maybe if people are interested, maybe there's a simpler way to do it, say like, if you wanna have a, you know, a specific group, like contact, you know, the town administrator, and we'll post a sign, you know, or, I don't know, just some way to like make sure that facilities are available for those who wanna use them, but-
It doesn't hurt being on the survey, it's not promising we'll do it.
So, so if you were to, the only problem with doing a reservation is you've got the kids in town that are gonna go down and play basketball.
Right.
They don't, look, the reservation's on the computer to see when, where they can use the court. They're gonna go down and play if they got five or six kids that wanna play. Problem arises is, it's always that, so a way around that is if you put a, a board, closed-in bulletin board at the basketball court, that said, "Every Monday night, we have this group is gonna be using the court."
Right.
Just that why, every Wednesday night, this group, and that's your sign in. And as they come in and approach the town to use the court to set up a schedule, then that list gets changed. That way the kids know, or adults know, that there's somebody on that court, somebody's gonna be down there to use it.
Yeah, I think that makes a lot of sense, you know, to get like an outdoor like locked thing for the building, and say like, you know, big signage, you know.
Yeah.
Mondays and wherever, like-
Right. And if you wanna reserve it so the kids could play every Monday night, or every, whatever, Tuesday at five o'clock, then they notify the town and say, "Can we reserve it for this time?"
And I know there's a lot of interest in like pickleball too, like, it's like all the rage these days. I've never blamed myself, but-
Would, would it be possible to take that other basketball hoop, instead of putting one over at the lake, just put the other one kind of over in the corner somewhere off the court, you know, we have another block top area, put a new post in, and put it over there, then you just have like a, a little small unmarked half court-
Yeah.
-for the kids, 'cause the kids don't care if it's-
Right, well, that's, honestly, I've been down there a lot, and my kids were little, and like the bigger kids were playing, and like, the little kids aren't gonna go like play with the bigger kids, so. I think that'd actually be a great idea, to have like a smaller area for like the younger kids who just wanna-
I mean, we've got room down there, but I'm just thinking, you know, put a post in, put that extra backboard over there, and just, you know, don't, don't eat marks, you don't eat foul stuff, you know.
Yeah, yeah, I think that's a great idea.
Just let them, someplace to go shoot.
Just a place to go shoot.
That way up there, if you've got three or four kids playing on the basketball court, and the adults go down, or whatever, to use the court, then they can, the kids can just go over to the other court, and, you know, not throwing the kids out.
That's great.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea, that's what we were talking about, putting one down at the lake maybe, 'cause that one's pretty dilapidated, and then using the second one for like a-
I mean, I would just, I mean, you could set a telephone pole, or, or something, just put it, I don't know, that'd be fancy.
Yeah, cement in a hole.
I like it.
It's great.
I, I think the survey looks good, too.
Thank you.
The other item we have is a cross-country track.
Yeah, so this was something that we had been working on, I just wanted to bring it to your attention, 'cause we were kind of in the process of discussing it with the conservation commission, but Sumio, do you wanna talk about the history of that a little bit?
Well, um, Brian, the cross-country coach, Brian Elliott, I guess, wants to put this, uh, course, like through the red area, and through stuff, Stony Meadow, using the existing paths, he's not gonna, we're not gonna be creating anything new, just using what's there, for the five K course.
Can I ask which trails he's interested in using?
It's like he's doing the rim.
Oh, the rim trail?
So he mapped it out, like he went GPS'd it, so there's a map attached to our minutes.
Yeah, they got it.
No, they have it, yeah.
So that would be-
So it like starts at the rec field, and then goes like all through fields and Stone Meadow, and comes back, and... So the school has to host events sometimes, like once a year, and he was looking for a better alternative, 'cause right now the kids run circles around the school, which is like really awful. So he was looking for a better alternative, and we thought that it was a great idea, because then like the community could use it. So, you know, if there was like some marker along the route, um, identifying like mile markers, you know, start, finish, mile markers, whatever, but we sent the idea over to the conservation commission, and they said no. But we haven't actually met with them yet, so.
Would you say cross-country, are you talking cross-country running, or are you talking cross-country skiing?
Well, it could be either, really, but he's the running coach, he's the track coach.
So-
He's the track coach.
I think it'd be fun from a recreation standpoint, too, 'cause we did have that five K years ago, and we could incorporate it into like Walon for Day or something, as like a really low-cost event for people, or maybe just that weekend sometime, but, I think people would use it.
Finally could, well-
I have to say, I don't like the idea of using Stone Meadow for it. The rim trail is not really, I mean, when I walked out, I don't wanna be running into somebody that's running that trail.
I mean, we had that problem with mountain bikers, that they didn't, the conservation committee didn't want mountain bikers over there. So now we're gonna put runners over there?
Yeah, we don't need a-
And I, I like your idea, I, I think it's a great thing, but I can only imagine what the conservation committee is gonna say, which apparently, that's already what they've said, is no.
Which is disappointing.
It is.
As, as somebody-
That they've turned you down just bluntly like that, that is very disappointing and frustrating.
Yeah, I mean, these would just be rare events, and they would, there would be volunteers throughout the track, making sure the kids don't get lost.
And it would be-
And it would be-
It would be well advertised in, in advance, if, if, if the track coach is doing what I think is being done, of cross-country, when you run cross-country, you run at different locations, and you run their trail. And so this would be a one-time-
Yeah, it's just a meet.
It would be a one-time event in the fall. Um, it would be well stated when that event would be, and would take place over a few hours. Um, the amount of time it would take all the kids to run through the track, probably a nine AM start, and around a twelve or one o'clock end. Um, and it would be only, it would be one day, say a Saturday, in the fall. Um-
Yeah, typically-
Oh, I, I, I agree with it, I think it's a great idea.
My one concern is the trail itself, I know the rim trail, I'm just, it gets steep and narrow in some places.
It's a real ankle-
And that's what concerns me, is that the way the trail is right now, I don't know how, how safe it is to have a race there. I think the-
What is the comparison of other places that hold five Ks for cross-country?
They usually do it around the school, or-
No.
No, no, they run it.
We go to lots of these-
It's like people come into our school, 'cause they run around the school.
A lot of them are held at parks and stuff.
Yep.
It seems pretty comparable.
It is a single track, it's not like, it's not like there's ten kids across, it's like they pace, you know, after the start. And that's why he started at the park, was so that by the time kids got onto like a trail, they would be spaced out.
But you do have some runners who do overtake other runners, who you need to have, you need to make sure that the terrain itself doesn't mean that people are gonna like pitch off and fall.
No, I think upgrading that trail is a great idea anyways, though, yeah.
The only thing I'd like to point out is in the conservation's minutes, they had just very briefly said, they're concerned that a five K track construction, so I don't know that they are-
I saw that in their minutes, but that's not what they said in the email.
Oh, okay, 'cause I've, that's, that's all, I haven't talked to anybody, but that's made me think that there was gonna be something built.
Yeah, they might think that there's some construction involved, yeah.
Even if there is construction of all this bettering the trail, it would be a benefit for them to have that trail.
Well, we put in a grant to actually upgrade that specific trail, and we didn't get it, so I think, you know, put in another grant to like try to get that trail-
I know they're interested in making the trail better than it is right now, so. I think maybe go to their meeting and have a discussion, see what comes out of it.
That's what we were planning to do, is the next step, but, so this wasn't to like get your opinion, it was just sort of like, you know, to bring, bring it up as, as something we're working on, just so you're aware.
Okay.
I'm wondering, though, if there's even grants, because now we're having athletic event there, a more of a school team grant to prove it, I'm just making this one up, but it might even open up other options for money.
Yeah, maybe. There is a lot of trails, there is a lot of trails money out there. It's just a matter of like, you know, putting in the grant, I mean, I forget it, I mean, the grant that we put in last time was, wasn't a rec trails grant, it was something else, and it was laborious and painful. It was a lot of work.
Doesn't this like more have the final say on what happens at Stone Meadow, and who you, who can use it, and kinda who, I mean-
Yeah, but at the same time, I think we should respect what concerns the conservation committee has.
I, I agree.
But they also didn't come here to speak their mind either, and their one note in their meetings is construction, which isn't the correct information.
Well, for now, I think we just table it until we get more information.
Well, it wouldn't, wouldn't be till the fall, it's not like there's an immediate decision we should make. Right, 'cause cross-country's in the fall. They would just, what time would they need to, 'cause they would start planning meets probably beginning of the summer.
No, but Brian will be there next week.
Yeah, okay. I mean, if, I think, to what Mark says, is who does have the ultimate, I mean, we, we don't allow other committees to have full, I mean, control of things. We don't, our committee has a full control of what they look over.
No, but do try to respect-
No, I do, I know what you're saying, I'm just, they, the agenda was out, they could've also come. Would be nice that maybe to actually hear their point of view, and to make sure that they're clear on what's going on, considering what they did put in their meeting minutes, to send to us for backup.
Yeah, we did get an email from them, I can tell you what it said. I thought it said that they worked it out about the-
Shannon said, "This is just for our information at this point."
Some sort of, yeah, concerns, like, God, have the runners on the same trails as-
They were concerned that it would conflict with the use of the trails, that's what the email said, I think, yeah.
For one day a year.
I think if it's a well-publicized event, people can plan to walk it to first on that day.
Yeah, like I said, there'll be people, volunteers.
Maybe they didn't understand that it was just one day, a year.
They might not have understood that it was a, a one-time annual event.
Yeah, we just need to talk to them, so.
I mean, people could, could go over now and jog those trails, and run those trails now.
Yeah.
Yeah, people do all that.
Yeah, so, really, is the only difference is, this is a scheduled event, so.
Does the five K go?
Yeah, it went to the lake and back. It went, so yeah, our five K, when it went, it went like, it actually went down Waldo and back, and then it went on the trails, and over the lake, and back.
So this is similar.
This is the same, yeah, it's a very similar, only probably a lot fewer people, that five K was a lot of people.
Yes.
I was on the route, like directing traffic.
And did that use rim trail as well?
I don't think so, I don't remember, I didn't actually run it, did you run it?
Yeah, I ran it.
Yeah, I was on the sidelines, directing traffic.
We went through the, the trail from the parking lot at Sandy Meadow to Elton Lake, was it?
So the beach trail.
Through the main trail, then.
The main trail.
Yeah.
Yeah. That could be an option, too, I mean, when you're looking at, okay.
Well, the lake could be an option, too, I mean, I don't know if we can like shut down traffic for a day, but, it's a nice, quiet street.
Yeah, we went all the way to boys' camp and back, through Sandy Meadow.
Oh, yeah, you went up that hill.
It was pretty brutal.
Yeah, you went up that hill, yeah.
Well, it's good to see them cool. I remember watching everyone at Deptford and go, boy.
Okay, I guess we're on to a recreation committee appointment. Sandy, have you received?
No, I didn't get anything back, yeah.
Anything back from her, okay.
I just sent her the mission statement, that's all, Raven.
Oh, okay.
Probably have anything to send her to sign and send it back. I just, but I sent, I sent it a while ago, and then I sent it again today.
So until we get something-
Back from her?
Yeah, back from Raven, we'll have to table it for now.
Yeah, that's, it's just so odd to me that the rec committee has to sign this, but no other committee does. Which is actually- Why is that?
Which is actually a question I've been having, is why don't we have this for other committees if we're making them do it?
Well, I was thinking that rec was first, and that other committees would be coming up with similar things, but-
Well, but here's the thing, is that rec didn't come up with that, and it didn't even go out to public comment, it just got adopted by the board, and rec is asked to sign it, but we're not allowed to like, I mean, we might at some point actually come back and ask for changes, but it just seems like a little, um, odd that, you know. And also, like, the CD thing, like rec, remember we had a CD that you insisted that we spend, 'cause you said it was illegal? But conservation has a CD that they've been carrying over. And not only that, but I was reading their minutes, 'cause I was curious about the trail thing, and they have like forty-six hundred dollars, and then we budgeted another twenty-five hundred, and part of that is a CD, that's gonna be carried over, so I'm like, I don't understand the inconsistency with how the different committees are treated in this town.
My understanding is that CD is controlled strictly by them, though, it's not in the town coffers, is it?
I'd have to ask Julie.
It is, I mean, I talked to Julie, I emailed about, I asked Julie today, and she said, "Gosh, I wish they would spend that, 'cause I keep having to like transfer money out," or something like that, like, it is managed by the town.
Once that's gone, it's gone, though, too, it's not, because that money was strictly donated money from, from our country store.
Right, and the Walon for Day money is money strictly donated for Walon for Day, and there's forty-six hundred dollars in that account, that's probably not gonna be spent this year, 'cause we won't spend forty-six hundred dollars on Walon for Day. And so, I would just hope that that would be treated the same as the conservation commission's hearing over their money that was donated for a specific event, or a specific purpose, so, does that make sense, Bruce? They should be treated the same?
Yes.
Great. Thank you.
So is your sort agreement.
Yep. All right, thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, I gotta boost up to change the way things are done, but the lifeguard job description before.
Oh, yeah.
Before they, before the Rec Committee leaves us? I just wanted to make sure that they were okay with the wordage. I mean, they're, the lifeguard, the Rec Committee. The lifeguards are part of the Rec Committee working at the lake and stuff, right, Nick? Or is it, or?
Well, it's the select board does the job descriptions. Cause they're employees.
They're employees, so it's the select boards' purview, yeah.
I guess we were concerned because, um, every, people were saying the bathrooms weren't clean and this and that, and we just thought, well. I wonder if they even know what they're supposed to do, like, would it help to have a job description?
Well, the, the concessions has, as I've shared with you, this concession has incredibly detailed, five-page detailed job description.
Yeah, I do. I was actually really glad to see it. I was like.
When they, when they, like, from chaining the gate open at night to taking the flag, or in the morning to flag, it has the bathrooms, everything, everything. And there were some great, some good, good suggestions as far as like, um, you know, the odd jobs when they're not busy and stuff like that.
Like a phone policy, yeah.
Yeah, well, we have a phone, the, the concession stand, it's the, it's their duties. We have a whole employee handbook that has, uh, which they get a copy of as well, that has phone policy and all of the policies and as far as employees. You know, anything like that, that's all in the handbook. But as far as job descriptions, yeah, I mean, they know when they're supposed to clean the bathroom, in the morning, in the night. They know and then at the night they're supposed to clean the bathroom, remove the rug, sweep and mop and under, all of that. And then in the morning, they're supposed to inspect it. If the person the night before didn't clean it, that person's supposed to clean it. Notify the person who was supposed to clean it the night before that they did their job. I mean, it's all in, yeah, it's very detailed.
Yeah, I thought it was really detailed. I actually really liked it. Um, but even still, like, I mean, just not as a Rec Committee member, just as a private citizen, I did email you. Last year about some real concerns down at the beach of like, you know, people being loaned boats without, or rented boats without, like, being told they need a. Life jacket and stuff like that, so, you know, there's still like, people not following the rules, but I guess that's.
Well, it might be now that the pay issue has been addressed a little bit. You might get candidates who take those, follow those recommendations maybe a little bit more to the letter than some people in the past have.
Wow.
Yeah, I wonder also, just because we don't really have a direct reporter, reportee, like, they don't direct, they just go to Julie most likely, right?
Well, that's one thing we were wondering, is if like there was a head employee down there, like, that's helpful.
I, I say, I think that's a really good idea too. That's something I've been thinking about. Uh, go to Julie for what?
No, just like the idea of like having somebody that they report to or they're responsible to. Technically, they'd be too lost, but.
Well, we give them like, yeah, most, mostly me. For money, it's, for money, it's Julie for ordering supplies. They have like a little chart that goes in their little packet. If you have this, this and this issue, come to me. If you have this, this and issue, go to Julie. So they know who to report to or who to go to with, depending on what their question or concern is.
And I guess just the, just the idea of like, they're concerned, but then if we have concerns about them, or citizens have concerns about them.
Then they can come to me.
They come to you, okay.
I'm not over there a lot.
Right, right, that's, yeah, having that, or even thinking about how we do that. That's not this year, but, or maybe, I don't know. Cause it would change the amount we've already allocated towards their budget, because you would expect somebody who is in a more supervisor role, even if it is like a head concession stand person.
Level one, level two?
Right, right, but we don't have that figured out right now, yeah.
It would be something maybe to think about.
Like a head concession or lead.
Yes.
You put, you know, responsibility right back in their own hands and give them a chance to lead.
That's, you know, it would promote staying with the job too, if you could work towards something.
And they've been, in the past, we've done in multiple years and have, have been very dependable.
Yes, yes.
Some of the employees have shown excellent qualities.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Yep.
Which is like any other job, you have, if somebody wants to do the least amount of work to get the paycheck, they will do exactly that.
And then others will see that and go, why am I doing this?
Yeah, one suggestion we had was, I noticed one changed last year, was that they weren't keeping track of like the people who came in.
There's, they have reports. They fill them out, they break down each person, adult, you know, child, they put the. And then they give it to Julie with the money every night. It's, it's called the daily report.
Maybe they weren't keeping people that had the passes, because they were always, they just waved me on it. In previous years, they did.
Yeah.
And I think it's, it's good to know like from a budgeting standpoint, like, cause even though like they're not collecting money from people who have passes. It still would like, be nice to know like how many people came to the beach.
That's something I know last year that in past years, I would be kept track, like, oh, you're, you're number thirteen.
Right.
And it would be checked down.
Right, like two adults and one kid, yeah.
Last year I was just basically waved in.
Yeah, you're like, oh, you're good. We see you every day, you're good.
Which then also sometimes gives the perception that they're letting people in for free.
Right, well, I mean, I was.
No, I mean, to others that are not, that are not normally there, it could always give that perception just for something to think about is, why are they, why are they just shooing people through? But it would be good to keep track of the numbers so that way you know, like, okay, we never have anybody here Monday, whatever.
Right, 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 right.
So I do wonder always how many past people are there opposed to just daily.
And also, it would really inform if we, if you ever, the Recreation Committee ever wanted to put some of your budget towards marketing and saying, like, putting it out that there's. We noticed that there's only fifteen percent of actual people in the town that are doing it on a past basis, like they buy the past, maybe we try to push that. Or you push it out to people like going down to the, um, the Vermont Welcome Center and making sure there's a, a pamphlet for walling for down there, that kind of a thing. To kind of attract those people that might be coming in just for the day. But that's a.
Okay, well, we're.
Which is.
Yes, we are.
There's so much potential.
Agreement.
Yeah.
All right.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I apologize also to everybody for being late again. Lucy, of course, decided she didn't want to go see until five minutes ago. Please dock my bed. That works out, it's like three dollars for that time.
Three pennies.
Yes, yeah, exactly.
Oh, why don't we talk to Julie? We can talk to Julie about it, the best way she wants to do it. She can always, um, get to check anything else. Why, why don't you find out from the dealer how they wanna, because sometimes they just, we can just pay them within thirty days.
Okay.
So if you contact the dealer first and see how they wanna.
Okay.
Thanks, Emile. Thanks, Emile.
Bless you.
So. I'm not sure how much we want to discuss this, there's, basically it's gonna just cost more.
Oh, yeah.
I know. I, did you see what the email I sent? They did get rid of the revenue sharing.
Yes. It sounded like they've been eating.
Yeah.
Certain cost for a while.
Yeah.
They're charging it back to us, so.
Okay.
Okay. Yeah.
There really aren't other options.
Right. And it's also one of those things where it's, they're losing a lot also just because things don't get cleaned or they're not, not the right ones getting put in and just, it's education.
Oh.
Okay.
Do we need a motion to accept their agreement?
Yeah.
I'd like that motion.
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Property map. This is an agreement we just have every year. Sandy, you're just looking for.
On the tax map?
Yeah.
Yep, so it's just another year. We have it in the, we have a, we actually put that two thousand in the budget we're gonna vote on in March, so. As we said, we've tried to, a few years ago, we tried to skip, to save them, save money and it didn't work. They just charged double.
Oh. Do we need to have a motion or just consent?
I would on contracts, yeah.
So I make a motion to accept this contract?
With cartographic associates.
I'll, I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Now, lifeguard.
Or the, uh, coin drop.
Coin drop?
I'll make a motion to approve the, uh, roder's coin drop.
Second.
Uh, do we know how that, cause I know last year we didn't do that extra coin drop just because, um, the fire department had their coin dropped nearby. Do we know what time that is?
This is, because we always do two, it's rotary and.
It is always, okay, I wasn't sure if this was a separate, different one, okay.
You do the fire department and you do the rotary and.
That's it.
Yeah.
That's it.
I'm, I'm fine with it then.
Okay, so I have a motion and a second, right?
Yep.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We need to discuss generator too. Um, we've been given tentative or conditional approval of twenty thousand seven hundred dollars, I believe it was. To do a grant, to do a generator here at Town Hall. I, they're looking for some signatures on the initial agreement, so I just need the board's approval if you want me to sign.
And then we were hoping, that was the one we were hoping for, the ARPA funds for the rest.
Okay.
Right.
For the rest.
Yeah.
I think, I think the twenty thousand dollars, well, they, they had a figure of forty thousand or forty-one thousand, I forget what. I believe all the quotes actually came in about that forty-one thousand dollar figure, but that's something we can work out down the road here.
Okay.
Can you, uh, send me your specs that they listed and I'll forward it on to a friend of mine, see if we can pull a deal.
Oh.
Gotcha.
Got friends in both places.
They're the best thing.
That's right.
Is that Broad, Broadbook or something like that?
But, no, it's Richard Electric over in Water River.
Oh, okay.
They sell Generax, I think.
So if for some reason this, the ARPA Committee does not put us through for this, are we on the hook for the, using the twenty thousand or we just, we just say that we don't wanna use this anymore? I guess is the question.
I'd say we're on the hook once we sign this.
Okay. And have you heard anything more about ARPA from any of the projects?
They have a meeting, um, later this month. I mean, you, the select board has the final say where the ARPA money goes.
Yeah.
Right, so we could say, you know, this is something that we need to do, this is a commitment.
And I also think that they are well aware that the generator is important, so.
Right, especially if we wanna do any more of our.
Well, Jim Bagnell has been doing all the legwork on this generator project and he's also a member of the ARPA Committee, so.
Don't do that.
That's, I just wanted to make sure that that, I, I understood that part of it, so I'm, I'm good with it then.
Lifeguard job description. Sandy had made some changes, which I thought were fine, I don't, I don't know, they're people's opinions.
I guess my only concern is removing the CPR requirement.
Well, I just, I, I just, I mean, I, I don't know, do they do that in the lifeguard training already? I mean, we haven't had somebody with a whole separate certificate since I've been here. We've never had like a.
Probably that's part of the line, but you know, that's, the lifeguard training is CPR. But.
Yeah.
Once they go through, they have to be recertified every year. I don't know if they have to be lifeguard certified every year, do they?
Two years, every two years.
But every year you have to be CPR certified, you know? You don't have it anymore?
No.
Um.
Mine, I have to do every three months, we do these things, so I'm, I think it's every two years, we have to go through the whole test.
Okay.
I'm happy, I'm happy to leave it in if you want.
I just think, I just think if, if the idea of we're getting a lifeguard, especially for, if emergency services do have to get there, it's a, a bit of a road to get down, a space to get down.
We don't have somebody that's doing CPR training that seems just foolish on our part.
It would seem part of.
Yeah, it would seem part that you wouldn't, that you would have that. If you didn't have that, I'd be very worried about your certification as a lifeguard, but that, that was the only thing I thought of.
My concern, I was like, it's hard to find anybody and if you, if you do lifeguard and you have to go get a separate CPR, I don't know. Oh. They offer that at the hospital, Carolyn?
Lifeguard?
No, CPR.
How regional does classes or they used to?
I wonder if that's something like Eric, Eric, um.
Davenport.
Or somebody like that, once we hired somebody, I wonder if he could do it.
Larry, Larry Reynolds used to teach it. Do you, she's, used to be part of, um.
The Red Cross used to too, I, I know that's where I took mine years ago.
Okay, all.
Rutland Rec does.
Yeah, all lifeguard classes include CPR, AED and first aid. That's from the Vermont.
When I worked the epic camp for Rutland, um, two summers ago, I had to take my CPR training. And they, they, they got us set up, they had people come in who, who trained us in CPR, we got our certification.
So you feel like the lifeguard training and certifications, that CPR is enough, or do you want them to just get separate?
I, I think it, I think it's sufficient, because if it's saying that, like, I'm the only thing I found is like, then it has to be a part of it, then I think that should be good.
Then that's perfect.
And CPR has been pushed to be so basic compared to what it used to be?
Yes.
It's not even the breath anymore, is it?
What's that?
It's not even the breath anymore, is it? It's just like compression?
It's con, male compressions.
Compressions is the main, like mine, I, I have medical, the medical one, so it's, we still do breaths, but.
I think.
It was compression to.
I think when Tori learned it, she was just compressed.
And it was stay in line.
Yeah, right.
It's still was that.
Yes.
So it's okay to keep that out then, and just because if they, the lifeguard training has to include it anyways, yeah, that's what I thought.
I really like the things that you included about all, all the things that they need to help with, like putting up the ropes and buoys and taking them in. At the end, I really like that. Um, and I also like this, um, unex- unexplained absences will not be excused, does that mean they will be unpaid? Any unexplained absence goes unpaid.
I hadn't thought of it that far, but it's just, it's not good enough to just say, you know, you can't not let us know you're not showing up.
I'm thinking there needs to be a consequence.
I mean, that's whatever you folks decide.
I mean, we don't.
We don't pay them if they don't show up.
They wouldn't get paid.
Anyway, yeah.
I don't know what other consequence, I, that's why I just kind of left it at, it's not acceptable to not show up.
And unfortunately, you can't let them go or give them, you can give them a warning, but you can't let them go, because there won't have anybody to replace them.
Right, that's the, uh.
One of, remember, there was a question about this, the reimbursement.
Right.
Right, lifeguard, if they did not work their required.
Yes, that could go in.
We would not reimburse you.
We will.
On its, with so many number, percentage of whatever unscheduled abs, unapproved absences, you know, cause.
Yeah, I'll go back and look at the minutes and what was the percentage. I think you guys actually gave a, if you're not, like seventy-five percent or whatever, there was a number that you've decided earlier. That needs to go in there, they don't get reimbursed.
And unexplained absences could lead to termination of reimbursement of lifeguard certification.
Or termination.
E.
Well, like what Mark is saying is because we have such a hard time finding somebody, if we terminate them in the middle of it, it might be one of those things where.
But at the same time.
You don't wanna turn around and say, well, we're not gonna fire you because.
I know, because there's no consequence, yeah.
I mean, you can say termination.
Possible termination, I mean, you don't say that it's.
Yes, yeah, yeah, yeah. It's, an astronaut process.
A verbal warning, a written warning.
Please, if anybody's applying, don't look at this video on, on PEG TV for some insight into our thinking.
And they offer that, okay.
Yeah.
Sandy had a question here too, do we wanna continue the seven days a week, five hours per day coverage?
Should we shift it to weekends? Just because we do have more people on the weekends, doesn't it be, well, is it just because it's harder to find lifeguards for the weekends?
Yeah, with the summer rec program though, during the week.
And that's the, that's why we, okay.
That's the big, that's the big focus.
Okay.
The last two summers, we've only had one person apply, even apply, so that, we, we we wanted to set, um, very, this is when it's covered, this is when it's not, so parents would know, and then because of the camps and stuff, we wanted definitely during the week, Monday through Friday.
Okay, sorry, forgot about that.
Um, wondering though, they normally do their extra fest, you know, field trip or festivity type thing one day a week. If that was a non-swim day, maybe we wouldn't need a lifeguard that day. If they could schedule it always the same day, just something to think.
Yeah. We only have camp four weeks of the summer, yeah.
So, it's like every Mondays when they did their field trip, or Tuesday, I mean, it doesn't even have to be always be the same, but if you know they're not gonna be there that day, you don't schedule a lifeguard that day.
Well, there might be other people there with young kids.
Well, no, but But that's where on the weekends is where you see a lot of them. Just to help shift it so it's like a more of a Wednesday through Sunday type of a schedule, or Tuesday through Sunday or something. Just a thought.
And then, and that might get it so that we don't have to have two, because we were not spreading it out over seven days? That's where the, the idea is, the, because I can't, I'm confused by the wording in this, is that we do it seven days right now?
No, we haven't done it the last two years, because we haven't had
Right.
We've only had one person.
So, like, even if, even if we did, like you said, like, I think Mondays would be weird, because it's the first day you're coming back, and it
So, like Wednesday or something?
Like Wednesday, so it'd be like Thursday.
I don't know, it probably wouldn't work, it was just something I just thought of.
Thursday through Monday, Tuesday, there's no
But I know
It would be different if we get multiple, I mean, we could even
This, this could be the year that we get more candidates for the lifeguard position. I don't know if I want to take out the seven days yet, because if we can get, if we can get qualified people, I remember when we used to have two lifeguards, or when we used to have coverage till seven o'clock, actually. And it was really wonderful to be able to be a young parent down there at the lake and just know that you had some, you had people there on the weekends, too.
And I know they were, one of the rec camp, um, workers were looking into also getting it, so that could help alleviate in coverage, too.
Yes.
So, you never know, we might have it.
We could just, you know, decide that later, depending on the applications that come out.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
The second meeting in February, Monday will be President's Day on the twentieth. Do we want to meet on the twenty first?
I will not be here.
Monday or Tuesday? Or both?
I will not be here Monday, I could be here Tuesday if it's a short meet.
I think that week is vacation week.
It is.
It is.
And I'm not sure at this moment what my schedule holds, but all, all, I guess every day's a holiday for me that week, so whenever we put the meeting, it's gonna be fine by me.
Yeah, I, I have no opinion on either or.
Well, we have someone from the state, right, that wants to be at that meeting?
And if they're not
And they're not working Monday.
They don't work on Monday, so
So, Tuesday it is?
Tuesday.
Tuesday?
Tuesday it is.
I have to leave three AM that day.
On Tuesday, or?
Wednesday morning.
Wednesday morning. I should be in California right now. Except my whole family got sick.
Oh, no.
Yeah.
Select Board comments and concerns.
I don't think I have it, yeah.
We're on to other business, then.
So, I'd love to chart on your, on the desk of just the reappraisal money, just so you know, like, that's, that's what we have for money, that's what the reappraisal prices will be, and down the road, we'll have to put a little money in the budget
Okay.
for the balance, but we did that on the last one, too, we had to put some money in the budget.
Okay.
The state money covers most of it.
So, we're out thirteen if we don't do anything? We're down thirteen, basically?
Yes, so we could split that over a couple of years, or whatever, you know, down the road.
Okay.
So, Erica Burney is hosting the bake sale at the Town Hall concert in March, she plans to make Bailey's infused cupcakes, and wanted to be sure the board was okay, as there would be some alcohol content.
I don't feel comfortable with that.
I don't either.
No?
No alcohol, period, is my opinion.
Cupcakes.
It's just, it is a tricky thing, especially if you're not doing it on a commercial level to be able to get that
Yeah, sorry.
And then if you're limiting it to only certain people, then you technically should be checking IDs, and then if you're checking IDs, you should be certified and checking IDs, or being a second to your license, it just gets a little
Simple to say absolutely, and if there's any alcohol down on down property
Yes.
At any time.
Mark comes
But she wants to make cupcakes. Don't have any alcohol in them, uh
Oh, she's not, she's gonna do the whole bake sale.
Sandy sent us the information about the Zoom meeting. The Elephant Lake already. I think we're all aware of Stephanie looking for individuals.
Yes.
I think I have something on that day.
I will be
Kathy, Kathy
I will be there.
We have Ca, we have Kathy, Bruce, Bruce Dobbins, Jim Bagnell, myself, and Stephanie. Maybe Peg, Peg Sewell or her husband, so it's most of the sidewalk committee. We'll just carry through on the rest.
Yeah, so I, I have a
Move through on the morg, uh, project.
I have a meeting right at that time, so I can't make it.
I can't really do three anyway.
We can't do three anyway, right, okay.
Um, the one other thing is that I had originally talked to Sandy about an executive session item, but after reading all the rules on executive session, I guess we gotta discuss this, and it wouldn't, it wouldn't be eligible for executive session, so um, I think we all know Phil Phil had an accident a while back, helping out Charlie, who had had an accident. And this proceeded to bring up questions and suddenly make us aware of what kind of insurance coverage does Phil have when he's working for the town? Um, Sandy and I had a meeting with Jim Bagnell, who was in the insurance industry for years and years, very knowledgeable. It appears, because Phil is paid with a W two, he's, he is considered a town employee. And he's doing things for the town. So, he should be covered under Workers' Comp in those situations. Um, Sandy and I are gonna go back to VLCT and make sure that's actually the case. And the other problem was that Phil ended up with about ten thousand dollars worth of damage to his pickup.
Right.
And his own personal insurance had to cover it. Jim pointed out that there's a clause in the insurance for non-owned vehicles that may down the road cover.
So, not by, not owned by the town?
Yeah, something that's not owned by the town, but it's being used for the town. There may be coverage there, and that's another thing that we're going back to VLCT and confirm with, um. We need to make sure Phil is covered
Yeah.
Right.
Under insurance when he's doing things for the town, because I mean, we all know, Phil does a ton of stuff for the town out of the goodness of his heart, and he uses his own equipment.
Which saves us money.
Saves us money, and we need to make sure, you know, he's financially secure when he's doing that stuff, and
Okay.
When the dog warden got hurt, was that Workers' Comp, or was that? So, there's no difference between that or Phil?
That's exactly, we had a, a conference call with VLCT, and I brought that up.
Yeah.
It's, it's, to me, the exact same scenario.
Same thing, and it should be the same for Select Board members, if we happen to
Right.
be helping somebody do something and get hurt, it should, you know, we're all covered by the same
I guess the only thing I could think of that could get dicey is if, Phil, you're doing something under contract with us. Like, so a ten ninety nine versus doing something like recovering a vehicle for the town.
Fallen in my insurance.
Right.
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 That would, that's totally different if it's hourly.
They're just making sure that we, we all know that that's the case, because if you're doing something directly for us, for the town, that we've asked you to do, versus you've gone out to bid for a project, that's the only thing I could think of.
Totally different.
Yeah.
I, I left, uh, Jim Bagnell's email to me on, on your table tonight, and he points that out, too, and he did it in the conversation. Has to be very specific when he's working as Phil Baker &amp; Sons, or as Road Commissioner Phil Baker.
Yeah.
Right.
We have to be sure that we define that when things are going on.
Yes.
I mean, most of the time, it's as road commissioner, we, I mean, when we hire him, when we hire Phil Baker &amp; Sons, we get contracts and insurance certificates and
Right.
Right.
It's pretty detailed, the contracts have been pretty detailed, like the roadside mowing and
That, that falls under a different category, but if there's things that are being done as a town employee,
Right.
then that should be covered by
I mean, so, you, you get calls clearing trees and clearing roadways all the time.
You know, and it, it leaves me in a situation where I, basically, I'm a paper jockey if I'm not covered, because I can't go out, I can't, I can't put myself in harm. The town, if I'm not gonna return anything, get anything in return, if something actually happens.
Right.
So, you know, and it, it's, it, it's just not me. It, it, twenty years or ten years from now, it's the next road commissioner, you know, it's the same, same shoes. You're gonna have to figure out what they gotta do to take care of it, so
Right.
the town is covered, so they don't get into an issue like they did with the dog catcher.
Sandy and I, and maybe we can bring Jim in on it, too, with his knowledge. I intend to have a meeting again with VLCT and just confirm
Yeah.
all this stuff, make sure we have Phil covered, because we do not
I'm in the same boat, he is, if I, if I was to do something for the town and get hurt, I have no income, you know, like Phil, he's, you know, because I'm, you know, I work for myself, so I have my own
That's right.
everything, so I have nothing to go back on. Thank, you know.
Yes.
I wonder, um, just because he said that, the employees have short-term disability, I wonder if that no?
He's not a full-time employee.
Okay.
I ran into that, you have to be thirty-two hours a week or not an employee to get any of the insurance, unless you pay the full amount or pay a whatever amount.
So, the, the insurance is gonna cover, hopefully, his work comp covers his injury, and maybe his vehicles, but not his loss of time. If he had an injury that put him out of work for a while.
Well, if, if he gets hurt, he'll get paid by Workers' Comp the amount of whatever a going rate for a road commissioner would be, so, in other words, he's gonna get an hourly rate from the insurance for that, for the time that he's out of work.
But just with the road commissioner.
Right, not on his own personal
No, no, his own, your
That was after income.
Contract price.
Yeah, your own personal income is, you, you're done with that, too. Till you're healed without to go back to work, but
Hopefully, we don't ever have to test this.
This is really grim.
No, but this is good to clarify and
It was an eye, it was an eye-opener for us when this happened, I mean, it was like, whoa, we need to think about this, we need to start clar, clarify some things, so so I wanted to make the board aware of it.
Because I don't have Workers' Comp, because I'm the only employee and the owner, so I'm not covered by Workers' Comp.
Neither am I.
And neither are you, right, right. All the employees, it's like, well, that's great.
I don't think about those kind of things when I'm in my own business. I just, I just try not to think about the fact, what if I do something with my eyes or my hands, I can't work? I'm done. It's a happy thought for tonight.
Well, if you get my knees, you know, done and stuff like that, I'm sitting there going, wow, please, right knee's gonna be six weeks.
Yeah.
That right foot pushes a gas pedal, nothing happens. Nope, sorry. That was a mild, a weak case.
I think that covers everything for tonight, because somebody's got I don't think so. Not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.